Good evening, everyone. It is already August. Time for the beginning of school. I hope each of you have had an enjoyable summer because it's just about over. We're so happy to see you with us tonight as we get ready to start 2021 to 2022 school year. We can already tell it's going to be an exciting year for us and it's going to be another uh year of surprises for us. But the team at Spring ISD, we work together and we always win as a team. So we will continue to do that even through the hard times that we may be going through at this time. So thank you to each one of you for being here tonight and we will start our work session for the first session for 2021-2022 school year. So this work session of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order. The time is now 6:04 PM. Board Trustees present Kelly Hodges, Justine Durant, Janet Gonzalez, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to please silence their cell phones or any electronic devices that you may have at this time, please. Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is the review of the minutes from previous meetings. Does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the June 3rd, 2021 Boardwork Session? The June 8th, 2021 Regular Session? The June 22nd, 2021 Special Call Session? And the July 13th, 2021 Special Call Session? Or the July 20th, 2021 Special Call Session?
Madam President, there's an error on the June 3rd work session, just on page 10, it's minor, but 1, 2, 3, Section B or Section C. It's references Avanti Houston Incorporated will provide HEARD, H-E-A-R-D, start and it should be Head Start. Services for eligible children. So this is a correction on the spelling of the name.
Thank you for that correction.
We will take care of that. Thank you. It's page 10.
You will take note of that and have that corrected for our meeting on Tuesday night. Anyone else? Anything else? Hearing none. These items will be submitted as a part of the consent agenda at our August 10th, 2021 Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. Well, welcome back to you too, Dr. Watson. We're happy to be with you. So we would now like to hear from you. Our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and all the other trustees and our friends and guests and coworkers in the audience. We are excited about the start of the new year. As you can see, over the summer, our teams have been extremely busy and so I do want to publicly say another special thank you to all the Cabinet Chiefs and all of the directors and assistant suits across the district who have worked hard. Hopefully you've been able to see some of the things that we've done over the summer in terms of our summer leadership for administrators. We just finished two different weeks of teacher training and I think information that Dr. Hinahosa and her team shared with us this morning is we had more teachers come to summer training this year than we've ever had. We had over 800. Over 800 teachers come to the summer training that was held over at Decane and so we're just excited about it. We know that they have some new curriculum that we've been sharing with you all last spring that they got the training in and we've heard very good responses from about the teachers in terms of things being very clear and understandable and the outcomes already identified. And so we're definitely looking forward to a great year. I would be remiss to say that we know some new updates came out from TEA regarding COVID today and so we just got those updates around 3 or 4 o'clock today and so we're going to be processing those updates and sharing some information with you all a little later on about what we're doing to mitigate the spread of COVID across Spring ISD. For those of you that were able, I did have an opportunity to share our vision and our message as it relates to getting back to school. I'm on Channel 11 last night and although they were talking with us about starting school next week, I reminded them that we already started school. We've been in school for about two or three weeks with the Clarks. And so many kudos to Dr. Natasha Watson in the back, who's the Assistant Superintendent of the Clarks. And they've gotten off to a very strong start. The cultures have been developed really well with the principals in those schools and believe it or not, kids came back. And so we started early and we were kind of wondering if kids would come, but their parents sent them. And they were there and they're learning and they have teachers and so we're very excited about that. We are going to have a very specific agenda tonight as it relates to our presentations. We do want to give you an update on summer school to let you know how we did in summer school for the 15 days that we had it. And then we're going to talk about accelerated instruction. We've already presented to you all our accelerated learning plan in June. But we want to go over accelerated learnings to give you an update as to where we are, what we're going to be doing and what we're focusing on this year. And last but not least, Chief Koberth is going to come and provide a COVID safety update to reorient you all to the processes and procedures that we have that we're implementing on our campuses. That does conclude my announcements. I do have one other quick one. I'd like for us to pause for just a few seconds in a moment of silence. Today we did find out what one of our colleagues who just retired this past May or June, Chris Hess, who led our Special Education Department and she just recently retired from our Human Resources Department. She passed away last night. And so we do want to just take a few moments of silence to remember her and all of the wonderful things in years that she's put into serving our community, but more importantly, meeting the needs of our kids. If I could just have a couple of minutes of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. We appreciate your sharing that with us because I know many of us remember Miss Hess. So thank you for sharing that information with us. Our next item on our agenda tonight is Agenda Participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone ready to speak under Agenda Participation tonight?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. So we will continue with our agenda tonight. I'd now like to recognize our Chief of Innovation and Equity, Dr. Lupita Hinahosa.
Thank you, President Newhouse. We're going to start off and let's see, we are on page 31. And we want to be able to bring to you an update on our summer school program that we had. And so I want to just pull up a quick presentation to be able to walk us through this summer. And as you'll recall, our summer school program was focused on recovering the learning loss that our students had gone through. And also, one of the pieces that was so important for us this summer was to make sure and bring as many students back to face-to-face. So two things that we focused on, coming back face-to-face, getting everyone oriented to being back on campus, and then that accelerated learning. Our summer school program. Let's see. There we go. Our summer school program was 15 days long, so very short, very intense, a full day. And as I said earlier, you know, orienting the students to coming back to school, we also had, you know, I think we always talk about our BHAGs, very aggressive goals. And so just a quick reminder, we wanted to make sure that we had an increase on our students' performance as it relates to reading and math. So focusing on our MAP, which is a screener. Our TPRI, de has le, focused on the lower grades, K2. Pre-K. Pre-K was a big emphasis for us. We wanted to see 90% of our students on track after these 15 days of instruction. Credit recovery for our high school students, a big focus, especially our seniors, and we wanted to see 100%. As well as the students that came back to school to retake their end-of-course exams. And as always, focusing on our attendance. So as you'll recall, we had several opportunities for our students. We had our, what we called our enrichment program, the project-based learning, that students could actually log on from home. So even if they were not in our face-to-face program, students had the opportunity to participate from home. Big focus on our GT, Gifted and Talented Students, as well as the AP, Advanced Placement Camps. Emphasis on our newcomers. As you know, we have a large number of students that are recent immigrants and so had a focus for them as well as our special education. Just a quick, what we like to call fast facts for you. We had a large summer program, very intense, 15 days with over 4,000 students that participated. Instructional staff, 376. And then finally, we wanted to make sure that all of our students came to school. So we did run transportation. We brought our students to school. Lots of wraps that we ran. So what did it look like? Well, how did we end up? Thank you. So in our pre-K program, we wanted to have 90% of our students that attended summer school be on track. And so in pre-K, we were specifically focusing on the vocabulary, letter names, and the mathematics. And so we had a total of 145 students that attended summer school and were tested. And then you'll see on the end-of-the-year tests that we're comparing to, those, that's a cohort. That's the group of students that tested at the end of the year and also attended summer school. And so you can see that we had really nice gains from, all the way from 82% of our students on track, as high as 86% on track. When we got to our kindergarten through second grade, so again, the same pattern, you'll see the scores from the end of the year with the students that tested, that were present, and then at the end of summer school, those same students that then came to summer school. So you could see that we wanted to have a 25% percentage point increase with our kindergarten through second grade. You'll see that in the 15 days of instruction, we made some gains with grade one getting closer to the goal that we set for them at 21% percentage point change or growth. Overall, we saw a 17 percentage point growth for our kindergarten through second grade students. In MAP, MAP, we are looking at grades 3 through 8. And you'll see that again, we had a 25 percentage point growth goal or target for us. And you'll see that we made gains, didn't quite make our BHAG goal of that 25%, but with those 15 days of instruction, you'll see that we were able to make some growth with the students that tested at the end of the year and then came back and participated in summer school. You'll see the same thing for math. Once again, our goal, our BHAG goal was to see a 25 percentage point increase in math. And you'll see the students that tested at the end of the year that came to summer school and tested again. You'll see we had some percentage point growth across the board. Didn't make our BHAG goal, but still had, most importantly, some growth. And we were able to bring in and test more of our middle school students. And then finally, that credit recovery, those students in high school that had failed courses during the year that then came to summer school and attempted to recover those courses. And our goal was to have 100% of all of the courses attempted, that they be completed. You'll see that we were able to make some really good gains, the students that came and continued through the 15 days of school, especially at our high school. We did have at the senior or those students working towards graduation, a 92% completion rate of the courses that were attempted. Overall, 62% of the courses attempted were recovered. And finally, the EOC exams. These are the end-of-course exams that the students need in high school in order to graduate. And so all of the students that attempted all had failed. And so they came back for summer school and once again, very short timeline for them. They only had about six to nine days of instruction. We did see some nice performance in the area of biology and US history with 46% meeting standards at that biology exit exam, end-of-course exam, and US history, 53% were able to meet standard in that EOC. Didn't quite make our BHAG goal, but as you can see with the students that all had failed, came back and with about six to nine days of instruction, were able to meet the standards. And so we're very confident that coming this school year with the same focus on acceleration, what we can do in a full year of instruction compared to what we were able to accomplish in 15 days of summer school. So it was very fast-paced, very engaged, and we're ready to continue the learning this school year.
Any questions? One of the things that, when the cabinet and I had a conversation about it, we were very impressed. You know, we had a strategy of trying to hire the most competent, the most highly effective teachers in the district. And you think about six days or nine days and every student in high school had failed the exam. If they can do that in six to nine days, what do you think they can do focusing on the kids over the course of an entire year? And so it really let us know that having the highest amount of, the highest competent instructors in front of those kids really does make a difference. And so we really want to continue that focus of acceleration. Add more time to it beyond the 15 days and we continue working with those students to ensure their success.
This is positive results to see that we got gains in all areas. How or is there an opportunity to implement this in the first couple of weeks? Oh, yes.
Absolutely. So we're going to be talking a little bit more about that as Mark goes into his presentation on acceleration. So we are going to be implementing that, starting the first week of school. We have already started implementing that at the Clarks. As you remember, a part of our acceleration plan, Tenet 4, is really about high-dosis tutoring and moving that forward. And so we're definitely going to be doing that. If you remember and have read a lot of articles in the paper, because most of the students weren't in in person this year, they were virtual. Most districts only focus on just getting kids acclimated back to school this summer. You know, listening to you all and the feedback, we wanted to give, you know, we talk a lot in this, around this table about BHAG goals. We couldn't say that we only wanted 50% of the kids to pass the EOC. So you have to say 100 because you want them to. And so we really believe that the work that the teachers did in nine days to get those high school students there really lets us know that if we stay focused and keep going, that we can make gains over the course of 180 days.
This is still some very good information and I praise the students who did pass the 80% passing of the STAR EOC and the course, courses here that completed theirs. I know they were glad that we did this because now they can go on to the second course of this. So we did make some, some students very, very happy. I wish others could have done more, but as you stated, the small timeline that we've had, six to nine days, we can do better when we have more time with these students. And hopefully, teachers, we will have some teachers that will be working successfully with these students next year at the beginning of school.
And just to reiterate, one of the pieces the superintendent shared is that we did have over 800 teachers come to our summer training. As you'll recall, part of the plan are the materials that we will be using. Accelerated materials. So for kindergarten through eighth grade, very specific targeted structured materials that we will have before our students. The Clarks are already using some of those and we actually piloted in the I-zone campuses. And then the most important piece is the teachers having the opportunity to be trained this summer. And then we're also having those sessions online. So the idea is to have the high-quality research-based materials. Our teachers trained either face-to-face or it's also available online, putting those two pieces together. We should see those results for our students. As you can see, they worked, you know, really hard during summer school for 15 days or the, the high school students for as little or six to nine days, we can get the results all year long. And how are we aligning the materials with the curriculum? Absolutely. That's a good question. And one of the pieces that we are doing is for reading and math, we're following the state's curriculum. State had the opportunity to do a lot of research, look at the workaround acceleration, and then be able to have a structured scope and sequence that allows the teachers to focus on the, the current skills that are needed while we're able to provide just-in-time support for the students that may need the additional learning time.
So in other words, especially for pre-K through 8, the materials are the curriculum. It is the curriculum. And so it's already aligned and so it's not separate documents if they're looking at. It is the curriculum. So it's 100% aligned and it was developed and vetted through the Texas Education Agency. It's part of the Texas Home Learning Program that we presented, I think, in April and May.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hinahosa.
Thank you.
So as we continue tonight, for our next item, I'd like to recognize our Executive Chief of District Operations, Mark Miranda.
Thank you, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, members of the board. This presentation should be in your purple folder. And I too will share my screen and it should very much complement the presentation that we just saw. So we're going to talk to you, see if my screen comes up. Yep, there it is. We're going to talk to you this evening. This presentation will overview the district's framework for accelerated instruction and really highlight the previous work that we've done through our partners, Intervene and Brown University. So we're going to take a look at accelerated instruction, but it's very closely related to, if I can get my screen to change, to our tenant number four in our recovery framework. And so we're going to walk you through some of the things we've done through the high dosage tutoring, which are going to complement and show you really accelerated learning in action. And so if we talk about high-impact tutoring for, for the first part of this presentation, TEA calls it high-impact, we're calling it high dosage. High-impact tutoring, really programs have a few key attributes and they have it, that can have a significant impact on student incomes. The way we're using it with the accelerated instruction, the high-quality instructional materials that Dr. Watson and Dr. Hinahosa just talked about vetted through TEA are being utilized in this. We have the one-to-one or the, really it's the small group tutoring that we're going to be doing through this. And it's going to be embedded, you'll see here in a minute, that it'll be embedded during the school year, during the school day as we go forward. And the significant impact, TEA found a 2020 meta-analysis of 96 students of, of high-quality tutoring programs. And they found that those students made five months of additional progress on average. So that kind of sets the, the standard for what we're going to be doing this year. So when we talk about accelerated learning and remediation, you've, you've heard both of those terms and you've probably heard them sometimes interchange. They're a little bit different though. Remediation really takes a student back to grade-level material that they may have missed. So when we're using remediation, we're usually focusing students on isolated skills that they may have missed in the past. And remediation is generally, however, disconnected to the current grade-level work. And so we're looking at acceleration. And so acceleration provides just-in-time supports that'll allow students to access grade-level content. So past concepts and skills are addressed, but they're addressed in the context of current learning. And so the, the difference between those two, we really believe that the accelerated learning is going to get us where we need to be. Keeping students on grade level and preventing the learning gap from continuing to widen. So when you think about accelerated learning, there's a framework that we kind of looked at that's, that's really similar to what I showed earlier regarding high dosage tutoring. And within the acceleration framework, what we are doing in Spring ISD is supporting our teachers, having a pipeline, the, the professional development that the teachers need and equipping the teachers to deliver that excellence so that we can see more than one-year growth within a year. And as we look at our strategic plan, you'll see how we've aligned specifically to some of these items in the framework. We also have that rigorous instructional material, again, that we've already mentioned here and that we were using during the summer school and will continue to use this year. And of course, more time for students that are in need. We're including targeted tutoring during the school year and you'll, you'll see that. The way that we're going to include that in the school day is that through all of our campuses this year, we'll have integrated intervention blocks built into the schedule. So at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, those integrated intervention blocks will be built in. So we wanted to see exactly how the acceleration, accelerated learning and the high dosage tutoring would work. So we had a program pilot that we implemented in our I-zone campuses this year. The structure for that pilot integrated the high dosage tutoring into the student's school day. It was about 45 minutes per session and the students were able to have it five times a week. And so the students that we identified were based on Fall Star interim assessments and those results. And so we targeted campuses again in our I-zone schools and specifically students that were identified as receiving special education services or students that were English language learners. And so these students, some of the students that had kind of the greatest achievement gaps in some areas were identified to be a part of this pilot. If I didn't mention that before, this was a partnership that we had through Intervene and Brown University that really helped us with this pilot. And so Intervene, Brown University, they're, they're part of, Intervene was part of our tutor selection partner. They provided live, high-quality tutors. It's very important for this, this tutoring to happen live. The tutors were available in alignment with the student's home language. And they did so on a four-to-one student ratio so they could handle kind of smaller group intervention in that way. They actually engaged the students with some social-emotional learning integration as well. And we monitored the program and the process throughout. And so part of that monitoring included data action planning and student growth. And so the pilot had an impact actually on the entire instructional day because teachers were able to go back and see exactly what each student needed to do to be impacted in a positive way. And so we would take the data analysis and identify patterns which are called distractors that we could target during the accelerated tutoring and really kind of pinpoint what this, which each individual student needed to be successful. And the results. And so the results were, were really, really phenomenal. The results that you see on the screen are specifically for Major Elementary and Bama Elementary School. And these are results for, for one of our small cohorts. Remember our four-to-one, five-to-one ratio of And these are results for for one of our small cohorts, remember our four to one, five to one um ratio of tutor to student. But this is looking at one of those cohorts in each of these schools, and and so with the major elementary. Um, and you can kind of tell maybe at the at the bottom, if you're reading um your hard copy, you may be able to see it a little bit better, but these are teak specific. Um, um items for each campus, so for major elementary, um it's four point two. Uh, B and four point four H in the fourth grade math tee. Um, that they were assessed on, and you'll notice the blue on the first uh bar chart. Uh, shows the pre assessment work, this pre assessment work was done in March. Um, then the first assessment was actually um happened April fifth, and the final assessment was May eleventh. When you look at the um, the values there, you see the percentage up to seven, sorry about that, up to seventy five percent. Um, were able to get the right answer on those teaks. Um, after the high dosage tutoring, so you can see a really dramatic effect, and what you'll notice if you look at the dates there is that this happened within about six weeks. So let that sink in for a little bit, we we just saw the summer school results within, you know, nine to ten days. The high dosage tutoring had a tremendous impact for these students within about six weeks worth of time, right? And so you see that with major elementary on the fourth grade math, you also see with Bama Elementary. Uh, on the fourth grade writing progress, a four point one uh five C um is the teak there. Um, and uh, four point one five D and four point two O A. Keep in mind that these are, these are teaks, and so there are multiple questions that are sometimes asked in different ways, and so you'll see. A little gain and a little loss, but the the bar chart that you really need to look at is that final assessment. Um, and you see here seventy five percent, sixty percent or eighty eight percent, so really huge gains that we're seeing. Um, in this pilot program for the from the high dosage tutoring. And so when we went back and we asked our stakeholders, really um our students, how they felt about the high dosage tutoring. We asked not just the ones from the small groups that I just showed you, but all of the students that were engaged in the high dosage tutoring. How they felt about the program and and whether they felt that they could improve their grade. A lot of this is confidence, right, when you're taking a test, you remember, I remember in school when I'm taking a test, it's it's all about confidence and. Um, also how they felt about their tutors, remember, it's it's one to four, and so they're getting kind of a personal touch there. All of what you see in the um pie chart, anything that you see that's orange, green or purple is positive. The orange, green and purple are are everywhere from somewhat confident to quite confident to extremely confident. And overall positivity rating for both of these part pie charts is eighty percent, really over eighty percent. If you will, the students said, yes, I feel really confident uh about what's happening there. So lastly, just to kind of wrap this up, where we're going from here. Is we're going to continue our partnership with Brown University and intervene for the coming school year. Um, we're looking at other T E A vetted tutors because we want the numbers uh that we can impact. Uh, to be as uh as high as we can, as we're we're going to be able to do, and um. They'll be doing the four to one small group accelerated dosage tutoring and reading, writing and math, we'll be doing that with intervene. And we'll be targeting the high dosage tutoring in students um three through eight. Um, and then students, of course, will be identified, um those that have the greatest achievement gaps and bad. Multi-year skill deficits using the accelerated model in the high dosage tutoring, so that'll be forty eight students. Per campus and literacy and math, that'll be grades three, four and five at the elementary school. And then ninety six seats in middle school per school, um and that'll be half math and half literacy for all of those, and so. Students will rotate um in and out that four to one tutoring, so as we see students that are progressing. And can move out, we can bring other students in and continue to rotate them through the process. Um, that concludes the uh presentation, we're seeing some really good gains and we are really excited about. What we can do through the school year when we had that kind of progress that you saw in in just six weeks.
So these are great results, and I had um raised my hand to ask a question that you actually answered. How the students felt, and it was on the next slide. But can you talk a little bit about the rotation, how they're going to be selected, who's going to be engaged and involved in making that selection?
So back to the slide that showed the uh, and I I mentioned how they're going to do the data action planning and the student growth. Students um, uh students principals, they will all be looking at the data action and planning and monitoring student growth throughout. So as students become proficient in teaks, we'll be able to rotate them out, um anything else to add on that from a curriculum standpoint?
Um, definitely, we um our research and accountability department team, uh Dr. Cobb and her team have provided the the schools already. Um, information on the students and their performance, specifically um around the students that have failed their star exams, we want to make that a priority. Um, so data being given and this the schools being able to. Identify the students that would best benefit from this program, of course, we'll also, if you'll recall from the plan, we also. Um, with your support, we're able to add additional staff members. Um, so there's additional intervention is being allocated at the schools, so we'll have the online. Just in time tutoring as well as additional interventionist on the campus to be able to support the students.
I I just want to say I'm I'm impressed with the how positive the students were with. How they felt, how caring your tutor was toward you, and a lot of students sometimes feel like about to have a tutor, I must be doing something wrong. It sounds like here or looks like here that these students really connected with that tutor. And felt like there was really a a relationship there and they wanted them to succeed, so these are some impressive numbers.
Yep.
And we'll say one of the good things about doing a pilot is that you get to look at things that worked well and things that didn't go well. Um, I know um the president CEO is out there, Aaron is here, I didn't know he's going to be here tonight, but um he's been a good partner with us um long before COVID. Um, we were looking at this, and so happened when COVID came, we were already in partnership, and then he became a vendor, and so. There are some logistical things that we're going to continue to work out, and so although the data is good, there are some things and areas that we need to tweak. Uh, for example, uh paramount to the students getting their minutes is they have to be logged in on time and they have to. Get in and be in the session when the tutor is there and waiting for them, because um if they're not long gone fast enough and they lose their time. That they don't get all of their minutes, and so those are some system things that we're working on in terms of when kids. Actually get to class faster and get logged on so they can have ample amount of time to be able to do that. Um, in addition to that, it's it's being um it's a little different, you know, kids are online, I'm working with their tutor. And their tutor is online looking at them, and so it's also getting them used to that over and over again, and once they get into a. A sequence or a cycle, um we'll be able to definitely flex that, but I do want to say um this summer I had an opportunity, I think, over. At Bailey, um he and I walked, I wanted to actually see the kids, talk with the tutors. They were online and to see the program again in action, and I was very pleased with the program. But we do have some continued tweaks we're going to do to make sure that it's an excellence.
There's always tweaks to perfect it. Uh, most things are fluid so that we can make sure we're achieving the goals that we need, and so if I understood you correctly, um. This cops is going to help with the actual data to identify the students. And then the campus will make selections in a rotational basis is what I heard.
Yes, yes, this past year, the campus has played a major role in um deciding who was going to be there.
But sometimes we have the data and we may identify the students, but do we have the willingness, and that's where I'm going with the campuses, being able to make. Appropriate decisions and and pivot where we need to.
Mister Miranda, on the integrated intervention blocks, you mentioned a forty five minute session. But I noticed Monday, Tuesday and Friday forty five minutes, but on Wednesday and Thursday only forty minutes. Uh, what's the difference there, what what are we doing? Or not doing, or is there something else happening doing that?
The 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 schedule that you're looking at, the master schedule is the high school schedule, so that Wednesday and Thursday. Those blocks that you're seeing at the top, really the the second part of the the second one for each, those are the intervention periods for high schools. So there's a little bit of a difference there.
Sprint it's all small, I'm trying to say.
It was meant to be a sample. It was meant to be a sample.
Okay, but we can certainly get you copies.
We can get you copies of the schedule.
That's okay, you just explained it to me, you just explained it to me, and I think I see it now, thank you.
We we have to remember that um this new house is a, I'm a counselor, a high school counselor that she's looking at schedules.
And and you and you you caught it uh in this new house, putting it in the master schedule, we will make sure that the. Students are there and they're there on time and receiving that additional support, so you know, just. High uh kudos to all of our high schools that went back and made sure, made the necessary adjustments to their master schedule. To make sure we got it in there, so.
So if you, so one of the things that we may hear that we're going, in order to be able to do this, to ensure the kids are getting it and scheduled in. We have to go back and change the master schedule to be able to do that, but we but we feel that has the most accountability and meets all of the guidelines. And so our campuses are working feverishly, they've been doing it all last week, week before and this week. To make sure the schedules are updated, because we added these blocks in and the kids that need to be in there, they're putting them in there as well, so. Um, it did throw them off just a little bit, but we this change was needed to make sure that the classes were scheduled.
Wonderful, wonderful, well, this is exciting, um. Their feedback, and I'm looking forward to the results. We've got a lot of with the pandemic and, I mean, we're still catching up from Harvey, I mean, we've been here. Back to back to back to back for several years, and so um. Um, we're going to have to do extras, I think this is, this is a good, good beginning.
Miss Newhouse, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind if anything came up, if you had a a minute or two or something you wanted to say, we've been. In partnerships, I will put you on the spot, we've called him and he. He jumps through all the hoops that we ask him to do, we ask, you know, we only have a few seeds, we asked him for more, he gave us more. And so maybe talking to you all, he'll go find us some more tutors and give us more.
Please.
And I have to say, a spring resident too. So he is a community member stakeholder for us.
Okay. He's concerned about his tax dollar too.
Up this is at a high level about just our partnership and things that we're going to be working on to improve implementation for this year.
Excellent, uh, good evening, thank you very much for the opportunity to uh come in and address you all. And for the opportunity to continue this uh this partnership, um it's been a tremendous uh partnership for us. Uh, number of years we've been working with you all, um really, uh this last uh school year with the pilot. Um, the campus principals have been giving us a lot of great insights on how to help structure. The tutorial so that is really effective in the school day, giving us a feedback on um. The scheduling inside of the uh the master schedule, as you alluded to, is key. And you all taking those decisions to make it part of the school day early. As opposed to doing it, introducing it later in the school year, so that's going to just significantly um increase the impact. Um, for the students who are there, it's a habitual thing where they go to to meet with the tutor, um the other thing is that we've um. Got a lot of input from your teachers, which has been really insightful on reporting and staying aligned with all the in school curriculum. So that the reports and the information is actually helpful outside of tutorials, and we've gotten a lot of information around. How to report that to you so that the net impact of the tutoring is 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 assisting in your tier one. Um, I'm open to any any questions you might have on the um program or anything. All right, well, well, thank you for letting me.
Thank Marcus, shared it with us, and we appreciate your being here with us tonight also.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
My pleasure, I look forward to this uh school year. Oh, absolutely, absolutely, it's a it's a it's.
Put pressure on him, yes, put pressure.
All right, thank you.
Next time he'll come back and share that with us. Thank you, Mister Miranda. As we continue tonight. Our next item on our agenda is our chief of police, Chief Kenneth Cooper.
Good afternoon, Madam President and Board Trustees, let me share my spring with you really quick. Right? So, uh, good afternoon, we want to share our return to school plan for this specific to COVID for you. And hoping we're going to um divide this into three sections, and I'm hoping the goal. Out of this is you see the confidence and track record that spring has for keeping our staff and our students safe uh through the pandemic. And it will also show you some data at the very end, some measurables that we have. Uh, just to show you some ways that we've gone about that last year, and the reason why we believe we're going to be able to continue this process this year. Also, as we developed this plan, uh this this wasn't a plan um solely done by emergency manager in the police department. We worked very closely to line this process uh along with our school leaders, so uh. Dr. Perez, as well as Dr. Carter, helped us work through this process, uh we were working on the the fifth tenant. Which my uh colleagues across have uh worked, spoke to you about earlier, so we aligned all of our safety protocols to connect with that, and we also did in partnerships with our school leaders. So again, we're going to really divide this into three sections for you, uh but paramount to what I'm going to show you. Everything, all the decisions we made for staff and students during the pandemic, the health and safety is paramount through the whole process. So we revisit uh our old processes to move to the new processes that we um have refreshed for this. And the health and safety of our kids and our staff have been paramount through this whole process and will remain that way. So this is a a slide I showed you all last year, just to reorientate us to the process we moved through. For emergency management and preparedness, and so these this wheel, uh you'll see represented in this uh presentation, I won't go all of them just to repeat them, but. Uh, you'll see this wheel, and this is a process that we continually move through. Uh, for not just the pandemic, but the majority of our emergencies that we have to uh respond and recover from. So one of our largest prevention. Uh strategies is to encourage our staff and students to stay home if they're ill. We know that can definitely reduce the spread, the less people that are in contact with someone uh that is COVID positive. And so we're asking staff and students uh as well as this, the parents of students and our staff that if they're ill. Uh, to just go about that in a in a in a smart way, last year we initiated something through emergency management called Stop the Spread Walks. And what we did then is we touched our campuses with multiple of our police officers and our emergency management team. And we assisted the campuses on identifying service gaps, um if there were not enough barriers up, if they needed more P P E. Uh, if there are more signage that needed to be put up, or if there are just simply um protocols that we need to help retrain and refresh. For end time training, we would do that at that time, so that process will continue. Uh, we will also um continue to have vaccinations for staff and students, those students that are eligible on our sites. On our properties this year. Part of our mitigation strategy is to encourage everyone to wear a mask if they feel that's appropriate. Uh, the touch points that on campuses, the high touch points, door knobs, rails, things of that nature, the. The uh Marx team and Gary's team are working very closely with our campus leaders to make sure that we are touching those and cleaning those. As frequently as possible to reduce the spread, and then we're also going to offer testing on site for our staff and students uh this year as well. Part of our preparedness is the plexiglass shields that we have uh a plenty of around the district. We're allowing staff and the teachers and administrators to um. Put in requests that they need those moved, but we're going to continue to deploy those as staff make upon their request, just to ensure that they're safe. Uh Harris County, we have a great partnership with Harris County Public Health, uh they've been great partners for us, and we want to celebrate that this year. Uh, as we continue to move forward, but they're going to take over the contact tracing for the district. The district will also continue to uh provide starter kits for staff, and so the disinfectant. And wipes and sanitation, sanitizing wipes will be available uh for the staff, and that will be at the beginning of the school year. We're also going to continue to maintain a limited amount of hand sanitizer masks, and that will be available at our distribution center for our for the campuses. They, there's a process that uh there's a a new form that's per that we produce and update it. So they can make those requests, ensure that they have what they need on their campus upon the request. And section two is our response and recovery. This might, there may be a slight move in the in your print uh hand copies, but. Our responses so far this year has been our private, our private and public. our responses so far this year has been our private, our private and public partnerships. I cannot speak enough about these partnerships that they've allowed us to continue to maintain a safe environment for not just our students and our staff, but our community as a whole. So Walgreens Inspire and then again, Harris County Public Health and the city of Houston have been wonderful partners. Um, and I'll demonstrate some of that data for you in a moment. Our recovery, uh, you're my partners across talk about, uh, us focusing on student outcomes. We understand that safety is the foundation to building a strong student. And so we have to have a, a safe environment and we believe this process allows us to really lead into the recovery plan that, that's been demonstrated to you all. So we believe that's just part of our recovery process. And then our emergency management team, we're always exploring the best practices. Uh, we, we use what's called a Swiss cheese model. And so we take, uh, different practices and we overlay on top of one another just to make sure that nothing falls through. And so we're always exploring best practices, not just, um, with the CDC and local and, and, um, other entities, but we're exploring those same best practices with other agencies that do our like work. And then lastly, we're really encouraging our, our school community to just reengage public courtesy at a different level. In the past, we've always known to cough or in your hand or your elbow. Uh, everyone has difference of opinions about if you should be vaccinated, if you should wear a mask. And so we're, we're, what through our school leadership team, we're encouraging our teachers to remain leaders in the process. And so we all have their certain opinions. And so we wanna make sure that we don't disrupt the learning environment by based on our personal opinions. And then there's some information that last year, um, that we learned. And so as you look at this graph, this is the positive cases that, uh, that the contact tracing team, our contact tracing team were able to, uh, pull from last year. So you'll see at the, in August, when we began to track the data, uh, of positive cases, you'll see the uptick. You'll see that we, we had a, a large uptick right around January. That was the holidays, holiday time. Uh, but here's something that we have noted, that if you look in January, that's when we had an opportunity to have a vaccine, uh, distributed in our community. And so you'd see the numbers take a drastic drop. Uh, and I'm no, I'm not a doctor, but I can tell you just by seeing that, that is just indication and evidence of, of possibilities of being vaccinated. And then based, uh, this first, uh, number one, this first bullet is a celebration of the leadership of, of you all and Dr. Watson and our cabinet and the, and the, our community leaders at whole. We've had an opportunity to give over thirty-six thousand doses of the vaccine on our properties. That's a lot of families, that's a lot of people in the community that, uh, were able to impact. And if, if it were not for Planet Four Stadium, these numbers would not be this high. And so we would not have, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the capacity to do this on all of our multiple campuses. And so, um, that's celebration to the foresight, um, that we've had here in the district as far as leaders. And then, uh, Harris County, again, another partnership, we've been able to get over fourteen thousand kids away. So the outreach kits had everything from masks, locations for vaccinations, sign-in forms for the vaccination, and also information about the virus, just so we could inform parents. And then the safety walks that I mentioned earlier, uh, again, last year we were able to accomplish a little over three hundred of those and we expect that number to continue to rise next year as we continue to train more people and be prepared. Any questions?
I had one. So great work. On, well, I don't know what slide it is, but page three. Can you tell me what differences we'll see with the contact tracing with it moving to, um, Harris County?
So they have, sorry. So Harris County has agreed to, um, take over that role for us. We're hoping that their resources, as, as we continue to lean on them and their partnership that they've always come through for us, we have an opportunity to, uh, bring more of those resources so that the, the team that was centrally focused for that, we can put back on campuses to make sure that we're keeping our campuses safe, that we're, we're also being an extension to, um, to their services in the field.
It will still have the same level of, um, contact tracing.
So, uh, to be honest with you, I don't know that at this point.
Okay.
But what our team is prepared to do to pivot if we, if we so need to.
Understood.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to get our folks back on their job.
Yes.
To understand the move. Just wanna make sure that that was the right answer. Because I think contact tracing is critical. And I'm really proud that we do it as a district, because a lot of districts don't.
Well, we are, we're, and we're still exploring other options in order to make sure that happens, uh, it's to some extent with us, but, uh, but again, yes, we need to make sure we're, we're supporting learning.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, I had a question in reference to the safety walks, um, on page seven. What was the timeframe those were conducted? You said it's three hundred and thirty-one. What timeframe was that?
You know, I apologize on the date, but we, we, um, we came up with that probably right around Christmas. And so, um, it was, you know, almost to the tail end, but what we did see is, uh, we were able to make sure we were, we were really concentrating with our campuses on PPE, uh, as, as the, as the timeframe really pushed on people and their, uh, their social emotional needs, that was another extension for us. So it was around, around Christmas. Yes, ma'am.
And I guess that brings up one more question, uh, as it relates to the social and emotional needs, once, you know, you identified that there was a need, what was our process for getting the, you know, directing them to the appropriate department or individual?
Yeah, well, we work closely with our HR team. Uh, we had a lot of employees that were, were able to move over to whatever services they need. Um, also, we had a lot of requests for Benji, uh, to touch the campuses and so that was a, a great relief. And sometimes just, um, Benji showing up on the campus was enough to help people decompress students and staff to move through their day. Yes, ma'am.
So I didn't know we have a lot of, um, new guidelines and updates that are coming as recently as you indicated this afternoon. And so when will we receive an update?
So, um, you all have the latest updates. So we got the information today and we did assemble this morning and right after TA gave us latest updates. Um, so there'll be some updates that are coming out tomorrow. We're gonna be meeting with our principals first thing in the morning to, uh, let them know of the new guidance we've received. So as their teachers hear either type on the, on the news, they'll be ready for that in the morning. And then, um, we're gonna bring you any additional updates that we weren't given tonight, um, on Tuesday.
I'm happy to see that we are preparing, uh, campus, faculty and staff members with the starter kits, uh, that we'll be giving them at the beginning of this year when they come back. It's very important that they understand that we care about their safety as well. So they don't have to go out, teachers, and buy your own Lysol, uh, hand sanitizers. We're gonna provide that for you in each of the classes and the staff members on the campus. So, um, thank you for, for doing that and making sure that it gets out to all campuses and staff members. Again, thank you, Chief. As we continue tonight, on our next item, we have our General Counsel, Jeremy Benclay.
All right. Good evening. It is that time of year again that we need to order an election. This year, we're, well, we're looking at page thirty-four. Uh, this year, position six and position seven are both up for election. And for us to hold that election, the board needs to order the election. And so page thirty-four is the order for trustee election. I'm not gonna take you through every piece of this. We've seen it year after year. We partner with Harris County to conduct the election. There is an application period, that period does close on August sixteenth. Right after the order, we have the notice, which is page thirty-seven. Uh, this is the notice that we post, uh, in front of the building, we post on our website. And this notice has attached to it Exhibit A. We have given you an example of Exhibit A, starting on page thirty-eight, which includes the list of all the polling places. Many of these polling places may remain the same from last year. They do sometimes get updated by Harris County if, if a space is no longer available or they have a better space that they might use. And so as Harris County updates these, we will also update Exhibit A and repost it to both the website and the, um, uh, the, the, I'm trying to think of the word, but the, the case out front where we post all the meeting notices, the display. And so this, this is the order and the notice for trustee election. Um, I am gonna ask if it can be placed on the consent agenda for Tuesday, but I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
You don't have any changes to the list of locations?
Not at this time. It's, it's currently, this is the list from last year because Harris County hasn't even put out the new list yet. Many of them will remain the same. But we know there's always some updates and, and we, those updates sometimes come even a, a week or a few days before the election. Harris County notifies us, whenever they make an update, we update the list and we make sure to push it out immediately so that our community knows where to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Benclay.
Thank you.
As we continue tonight, our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Student Code of Conduct. Mr. Miranda, our Executive Chief of District Operations.
Hey, President Newhouse. Dr. Watson, members of the board, I'm on page forty-one of one twenty-seven. This is the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Student Code of Conduct. That is the district's response to the requirements of Chapter Thirty-seven of the Texas Education Code. And the code provides information to parents and students regarding standards of conduct, consequences of misconduct and procedures for administering discipline. For this presentation, I'm gonna be calling Thomas Graham, the Director of Student Affairs, uh, to the table to be able to give you our updates to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Student Code of Conduct.
Good evening, Madam President. Superintendent Watson, members of the board, my name is Thomas Graham. I serve as the Director of Student Affairs for the district. Take a few moments today to provide an outline for our Student Code of Conduct for you. Now, I have supply for you as information on the left in black from the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one Student Code of Conduct. In the middle, you see recommendations for actions taken. And on the right, you'll see revisions from those actions. On the far right, you'll see the page number where you can locate those revisions in the Student Code of Conduct. The legal department, school leadership officers, and CBC's Campus Behavior Coordinators were all consulted during the revision process. I also worked with members of our FAD Committee, our district, I represented our district as part of the FAD Committee that's a focus on attendance and discipline with other directors and assistant superintendents from around the Houston area on the Student Code of Conduct development. I use the Taskby model and handbook from TA updated revisions. Additionally, we also looked at other aspects from other, uh, surrounding districts when we consulted with the Student Code of Conduct. Some of the revisions that you see before you right now, we looked at the Student Code of Conduct, electronic distribution of the Student Code of Conduct. Last year, we had a electronics distribution of the Student Code of Conduct for COVID. We're gonna continue with that for this year. Also, we have our restorative services that has been added as part of our NTSS multi-tier system of support that's also been included in the Student Code of Conduct. As a recommendation from Taskby this year, we have included the fact that seniors who are sent to the DAP will still be eligible to participate in graduation unless notified in their DAP order. Some other key revisionary, we removed the purposeful interference of students' PPE, uh, protective equipment as part of the COVID epidemic that we had for last year. And also this year, students newly enrolled to the district will be reviewed who have pending DAP placements. Those pending DAP placements, we'll look at those on a case-by-case basis to determine if we're going to continue those placements. We also removed items that were deemed to be somewhat obsolete. An example of that is the use of pagers, laptop, cell phones in the classroom and things of that nature, because we still use those so much right now. A future additions to the Student Code of Conduct, we're looking at the creation of a district discipline philosophy and a student bill of rights that will help address discipline equity for all spring ISD students. It's gonna provide a contextual framework for discipline policies and procedures this year. It's gonna incorporate feedback from district stakeholders within its development. More communication regarding this will be forthcoming. This concludes my summary for the Student Code of Conduct. If you have any questions regarding the Student Code of Conduct, I'd like to entertain.
Yes, Mr. Brown, I'm trying to find the page that my question was on. Okay, here we go. You indicated that on page three, uh, it's bottom, key revisions, the third one down from the second section, revision of newly enrolled students. The district shall decide a case-by-case basis, the placement of a student who is subject to an expulsion order from another district.
Yes, ma'am.
Student comes to you from Alden or any other district and has been expelled.
Yes, ma'am.
Our process now is that if you were expelled from that district, you have to complete that expulsion in our district if you wanna go to school in our district.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what it is now?
That's what it was in the past?
Yes. Please share with me your rationale for why you're not continuing that and you're looking at it on a case-by-case.
Excellent. Or, uh, an example, last year we had a student who was sent to JJ AEP from another district for an incident that in our district, we don't even send to the DAP. As we're looking at discipline equity for the students from that our district, we wanna do what's best for students that were within our district. If a student came from another district with a particular incident that we don't still see as something that is going to be worthy of an exclusionary placement, we want to review the factors that go into that before making an arbitrary decision to go ahead and send that student.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your reviewing, uh, student cases like that, one by one. And I would be interested in knowing what guidelines we have that a student may not receive an expulsion, but yet another district requires them to have an expulsion. I wanna know where, why we wouldn't have that, why do we consider that in our Code of Conduct? Cause there may be something we might need to change in our Code of Conduct. We're not always right all the time and we miss some things sometime. So I could appreciate that, um, according to our guidelines, he would not be an expulsion. So case by case, but when that comes up, I would appreciate, we would need to know that, cause I would like to know why.
Yes, ma'am.
We are, are different from another district on an expulsion case, not just any other suspension in a campus or something. not just any other suspension at a campus or something, but it's specifically an expulsion because I consider expulsion very, very serious.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it impossible, is it a way to word it that we will apply our policies around expulsion? So it doesn't seem like it's arbitrary?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Let me get a report and just refresh my memory at the end of the year on the number of expulsions, I guess. Do he reports, okay, because I'd be interested to know the impact of these changes.
Yes, ma'am.
Discipline equity.
Thank you. There are no other questions. Thank you for your time.
One other thing, because I guess this is really concerning me. That before that happens, where, who does it go to? Where to make that decision?
That's a very good question. Right now, if a student is going to the DAP or JJ AEP, that is a campus-based decision. However, the processes that I've shared with our campuses right now, that anytime we had any DAP or any type of exclusionary disciplinary process, we always have a conversation. So those campuses reach out to me and we sit down and we have a talk about some of those situations. For the incident that I just shared with you from last year, that involved a student simply showing gang signs as dictated by that particular district. In our district, we do not send students to JJ AEP for those type of incidents. Now, as we have our outlines from the previous year, that student would still have to go to JJ AEP. As we're looking at this right now, that could be something that we could actually have a conversation with their principal about, about what would be the best way to help that student enter into our district.
So are you the person that makes that decision? I'm not aware of who does it for our district.
The principals have the ultimate decision on that. I consult with the principals and guide.
Principals have the ultimate decision on a student coming into our district, whether they should complete expulsion?
Principals have the ultimate decision on whether students go to the DAP or not.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So we don't have a committee anymore, a district oversight committee?
Thomas, you do have a committee that reviews DAP placements at the end of the year. We, so we do have a committee. Thomas leads that committee. It contains individuals from the campus, the campus representative, along with Thomas and who else is on your committee?
Whomever is this campus behavior coordinator for that. And then we also invite other individuals from the campus. We invite assistant superintendents. We also invite our student support specialists as well.
Correct. So yes, they are reviewed by a committee when they are, like at the end of the year, if they have a DAP placement or if we have transfers in, such as the one that we're using in this example.
Madam President, is this something you'd like the Governance Committee to look at?
Yes, it is, Mr. Rand, because I don't consider a spring a weak district in discipline. I want us to be a very strong district in discipline. And if that is something that we have missed, and I'm not sure what your gang signs was there, but it should be not one person that makes that decision. And I wouldn't want to put that much authority on a principal to make that decision, especially. It needs to be a committee, like Mr. Miranda said, a district committee. And if necessary, even brought to the school board.
We'll be very happy to bring it to the Board Governance Committee.
Bring it to Governance, because I've always kind of felt there was a gap there that there's no line of sight from that committee to the board. And so maybe we can put something in place.
Absolutely.
That'll bring you a better level of comfort then.
Thank you, Mr. Rand.
Wasn't this an area mentioned in the Equity Report about that, I think?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are hoping to have the Student Code of Conduct approved with this development in terms of taking that one section to the Board Governance Committee. We normally have approval at this time so that parents and students can sign off on the Code of Student Conduct at the beginning of the school year. We may be able to do it exclusive of that clause, Jeremy?
So what I would recommend to do is, Mr. Rand's going to be taking it to the Governance Committee. I would recommend, I recommend that we go ahead and approve that. And then as soon as any changes are made from the Governance Committee, we can recommunicate it out with parents, but school starts next week. And we have to have a Student Code of Conduct should anything happen. We have guidelines for staff to follow.
I was going to recommend we move forward as long as the language is clear that it's not an, you know, arbitrary decision.
We do plan to add your comment about based on district guidelines.
Then I'm okay with it. I know about my colleagues.
Okay, we'll make that change for next week. And if it needs to not be on the consent agenda, is that how that would work?
We'll just show you that that change is made.
Right, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. As we continue tonight, I'd next like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Westbrooks.
Good evening and thank you, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. If you'll join me on page one fifteen is our first item of the evening, which is our monthly report of taxpayer refunds. And while you're reviewing that report, I wanted to mention as well that if you may recall, during the eighty-six legislative session with House Bill Three, there was a change that required our Harris County Appraisal District to do multiple or an additional estimate of our property values. And so in April, we received an estimate of our values and that's what we used to develop our budget. That was adopted by the board in June. And we had an increase in our property values at that time of about three point nine percent. And our July twenty-fifth estimate came in a bit higher than that and we're closer to a little over six percent increase in our property values. And so we'll share those exact numbers with you in a future board update. But I just wanted to share that since we're talking about property values and taxpayers and refunds.
Well, that's good news. That's double what we thought.
Yes, ma'am. And more in line with what we've seen over the last couple of years with our, with our increase in values. And so it was a bit of a shock. And so, of course, that changes our maximum compressed tax rate, but we'll talk about that at a future board meeting. If there are no questions on that item, Madam President, I'll move to the next item, which is on page one eighteen. And this is in reference to policy CMD Legal, which requires the district to seek the board's approval in order to dispose of worn-out and out-of-adoption textbooks that we have. And currently in our, in our warehouse, we have out-of-adoption books that date back to 2010 through those textbooks that have gone out of adoption in this current year. And so we're seeking the board's approval to begin the disposition of those, of those items. And so typically, we would start by recycling any that is just easy to recycle and we go through that process. And so with your approval, then we would start that, of course, with the oldest documents and then work our way forward to the most recent ones that have become out of adoption. With no questions, our discussion on that item, I'll move to the next item, which is a request for proposal for workers' compensation for our third-party administrator. And this is the company that works with the district to handle all the claims and all the workings of the workers' compensation plan. And we have a current contract with a company named York Risk Services, who recently has a name changed to Sedwick. And so we had an RFP several years back and that has expired. And so what we're asking the board for is to allow us to have one additional renewal term with the current vendor and allow us the opportunity to stay with the relationships working well, the, the terms and conditions are still working well for the district. And that would allow us one additional year and we would go out for a request for proposal in the 2022 school year or at the end of the twenty-two school year. Okay, and if there's no questions on that item, then we'll move to our next one, which is a request for proposal for guidance and counseling, mental health support and intervention services. And so we issued an RFP for, excuse me, we issued a competitive sale proposal for those services. And we had fifteen vendors that responded to the, to the proposal. And of those fifteen vendors, through our process of analyzing price, the quality of the services that could be provided, and of course, the reputation of the vendors, we are recommending to the board that we award nine of those vendors who are deemed to be qualified to provide the services. And of course, the district and the administration, when those services are needed, would determine which of those nine qualified vendors would be able to provide those services to the district.
Question, so for clarification, can you give an example of when these services are used? I want to be clear that I understand, for example.
And I'm actually going to turn that over to Mr. Miranda, who oversees the guidance and counseling team.
Sure, if you take a look at the matrix that's behind the first page, the matrix will give you an idea by the company names, what they would be used for. So it's a variety of services, everything that you see from psychological services to behavioral consultants. Some of it is professional development that we're able to give counseling consulting services. So we have generally a wide variety of counseling-related services that we can implement at a given time.
Comes and it's identified that they have a mental health need and we look at this matrix and determine.
Yes.
Which, okay, how was this promoted? How do we, how are our RFPs put out there? I know I've asked this before. I'm still unclear on that process.
Yes, we're actually required to post, they're, number one, they're on our, they're available on our website. But we're also required to post them publicly through newspapers and those sorts of ways in order to ensure that the public at large is aware of the RFP being available. And we actually had forty vendors that reviewed it. They viewed it, but not necessarily responded.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If there are no additional questions on that item, then we'll move to our last item under Financial Services for the evening, which is on page one twenty-three. And it is our monthly report of purchases that were purchased using a cooperative agreement that totaled an amount over fifty thousand dollars. And since, of course, we didn't have a board meeting in July, the list is quite long. And it covers the time period from May thirteenth through July ninth. I know it's a lengthy list, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity to ask any questions or if there's any questions regarding what you see here.
I'd like to ask Mr. Miranda how the construction is coming along for the gym at the Spring Leadership Academy.
I actually swung by there today. They're doing the masonry work on the gym now, so they're putting the brick siding up. One of the things that we've had a little bit of an issue with is getting the mechanical equipment in. So the wrap is going to be good. The mechanical equipment's coming in a little bit later. So we anticipate the gymnasium being ready in September for them to be able to do that. So the waiting on the mechanical equipment to get the HVAC done so that we can do the flooring. But the wrap will be done soon and as soon as we can get that open, we'll be able to run. It is coming along. If you drive by, you'll see them working feverishly every day.
Yeah. I have seen it up and I know the students and faculty will be excited to have a gym for them to be able to do awards, presentations with the whole school rather than just in a little cafeteria or a parent's meeting, community meeting in the gym there rather than that little small eating space that we have. So this will be very nice for them.
So everything's on target with all of our construction. Everything's ready, good to go for school opening, right?
Everything, there are no showstoppers at campuses. So we have, that's a good way of putting that. So we do have the gymnasium over at SLA and we will be wrapping up the barbering academy at Westfield that you can see across the parking lot. That's close to being done. It's also an equipment issue. We're receiving the equipment to be able to install in the barbering probably within the next week or two. And those will be installed and be ready by the end of the month.
Thank you. How about the gym floor for Westfield? I mean, not Westfield, Wells Middle School.
The Wells Middle School gym floor, I'm trying to remember. I'm looking at Gary over in the, that'll be. I was just going to ask him to yell it out.
Come on down.
So just like everybody else, we've had a hard time getting any material, especially plywood. So we do have the plywood on site. We do have the flooring, the maple flooring on site. But we're going to be maybe a week or two into school before that's finished being laid, sealed, and painted, so.
That's why I ask. I know there was a lot of.
I believe it's.
Delays of materials. So you guys did a good job if there's no showstoppers.
No, not a showstopper. Thank you, Gary.
Okay, if there are no additional questions, that was the last item for me, Madam President. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. That being your last item, that's also our last item on the agenda for tonight. So at this time, the board will now recess in an open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, and five-five-one-point-oh-seven-six. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now seven-thirty-two. We will now reconvene and resume the work session of the Board of Trustees. The time is now eight forty-two PM. We will address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move the board approves a resignation and release agreement with Maria Madrono as discussed in closed session.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Janet Gonzalez, seconded by Justine Durant, that the board approved the resignation and release agreement with Maria Madrono as discussed in closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Hearing none. There are no other items on tonight's agenda, so I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Kelly Hodges and seconded by Janet Gonzalez to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There's no further business tonight. This meeting is officially adjourned at eight forty-three PM.